Gentlemen, for the meeting to order and start with a pledge please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the agenda and is from November 12th and is from November 14th, top board meeting and a House panel.
We'll second that motion. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Any questions of the accounts payable, Jack? Hearing none, all was in favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we have no legal licenses, Amber. Thank you. Public comment. You stand up and state your name, please, so she can keep it for the record.
Okay.
You're up.
You said I hadn't said anything for three weeks. I think we have a lot of people here interested in veterans affair thing.
Yes.
I'm not a veteran. Father is. I want to make one comment. As a taxpayer, I hope we invoke the most cost-effective solution. Whether we stay in the building or move to the new building. However, having listened to Elizabeth last week, I wanted to make sure whatever choices are made, that the services are provided. Nothing is cut. We can do it in the most efficient way. In a dignified manner, private offices, whatever it takes to do it. Make sure that if the move is made, that there's no effect to the services being provided. But I'd like to see the most cost-effective solution. Be the choice. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah. Had Richard talk to you guys about possible permit assistance, looking at the permit to drill a well for Oak Township.
Uh, no, not formally, no.
Okay. I had visited with him a couple of weeks ago. The fire station and community center got their water shut off. Their water is controlled by Toby Jacks. And I think, you know, I visited with you guys clear back in December about some issues that were going on. And the flood was pulling the water shut off. Since then it has come back on, but we were in desperate need of getting our own water source. And so I visited with Richard a couple of weeks ago. He was going to talk to you guys and I just, I tried to contact him last week, couldn't get hold of him.
Sure.
If we could have heard anything.
There were three of us. It's hard to.
Yeah, I know, because you ran into election day and stuff like that. He told me about that, but I didn't know through your meetings whether you had any discussion.
Not yet.
Okay. Can you keep it in the back of your brains and actually get together? We, we really desperately need to get something figured out.
I'd like to see city water run that way.
And that's what Richard and I talked about it one time too, but 900 time constraint.
Understood.
For the community center, we made it work out, but we basically had to refund like six rooms. Because we had no bathroom facility, no nothing. So we need to do something. So if you guys could put in your notes or something, next time you're together to discuss, see what we get today.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, border supervisor committee updates. I had nothing last week, so I'm going to sort of sweep.
Last night I had a board of health meeting. Firefly was there giving updates. They have a few different programs, chocolate lead prevention. They have I smile. They have maternal health programs and they mentioned that they went without a digital hygienist for over a year. Now that they have the dental hygienist back, they're able to do the I smile program at the school again. Then in addition to that, Mills County Homemaking Service also received a 9.2 out of 10 rating from a group of their clients. So that's pretty good that they're ready to get them down. That's all that I have.
I did forget. I had a zoning meeting last week and we're looking at some ordinances for nuclear revising our two homesteads on one property in the state. I changed their rules, we got to have to organize such as those. So yeah, accessory building. Okay. Mr. Pharaoh, you are up. First item, first item is assign the final plans for L 63 overlay south of Melbourne.
Right, so I'm going to write a schedule to the DOT to get through on February 6th, leading. So February 16th, the earliest construction would be a few months after that. So probably look in as early as May. I'm going to give a feeling of someone as well to complete this total four miles to spread at the south limit, city limits of Melbourne. Going down 315th street, down Melbourne 32th street, stopping down at the cap. This is going to be funded through our FM account and then we also have some federal funds through STNG on this. The system was down. I was going to see what the latest estimate is for this, but I think we're around $2 million. We're doing leveling boards an inch in some places and then we'll be putting three inches out. It's a asphalt underlayer and then it's a hypo surface mix. So they both have high oil contents, very flexible, that keeps that reflective cracking. I think this will be a good project.
That's the concrete you're going to overlay, right?
Yeah, there's a little bit of asphalt section.
Sure.
Sure, a little bit of milling, drilling filter there within that concrete. Yeah, that'll preserve that.
All righty.
Make motion to sign final plans for L 63 overlay south of Melbourne.
I will second that motion. You got a motion second to approve the signing of the final plan for the L 63 overlay south of Melbourne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
General discussion. What do you got, buddy?
Okay, Thursday, remember safety meeting, county roads department. Order safety meetings. So if you guys are, welcome to come attend that. We started at 7:15. I start first and kind of do county updates. Just kind of talk about different things we've been through since last safety meeting, catch on. And then watch the video, a little bit of grading on one more patch. Travis coming down to us and our radio. And then we're having a feeder dump or chainsaw, electrical safety, so we can prevent trees, watching out for proper way to see it like that. So it'll be a pretty good safety and I love the lunch at the end. H12 is, all the pavement is done. They just have shouldering left. You have the subcontractor lined up to get that completed Thursday of this week. He's very upset. The prime was because they called him yesterday and said they're going to do a different job. So they're not going to get the shoulders completely finished off for Thanksgiving. They didn't have them put out there, the consigns for shoulder drop off. We're going to hit the center line markings painted. He's going to use a grater kind of brush and brush them up so there's not a big drop, especially at President's Drive. So for a little bit of time, we're going to have a little bit of a drop there, a lot of times also. That'll be completely finished when they come and do that by that Thanksgiving. Other than that, we, U-TAC is learning good. Good to get him on this project a little bit and have a chance to close out some of that first project, hook up this project. Get there for more there.
So I guess snow this year, so I don't have to worry about plowing.
Not going to snow this year. I did remind you, we did have a meeting yesterday. Richard was there, different department heads about snow and ice policy. Very good discussions. It was good to see the perspectives and just kind of how we can all help to be on the same page and kind of work through some of those situations. And patient and things like that. Very productive meeting, I think.
Good.
That's all I got.
I have nothing else. Thursday's at the H2. Phil Dassner, you're up, buddy.
Oh, I knew it. I was kind of sad. I, oh, I know, 10, 11 years ago, I got to come to town and it looked like we had a little building. It wasn't much. Kind of the little eyesore. They had to kind of go down to the studs. I didn't know what was going on there. Look at these veterans up there, son. Up on the road. There's a flag. I don't think it was there, but it's a flag and there's a flag there now. And I feel when you're moving it, you can argue about saving costs. But there's something about that coming into town of all this. And after I've been in the senior center, there's quite a few vets from Sarpy County that have come over here. They can see that first. They can't see where you're going. They can see that at first. And they're coming here. And that's one reason they're coming. Another reason, we got lower taxes here, a lot lower than Sarpy and Nebraska. And I just think that, I didn't know if I was a veteran. I just spent six years with National Guard. I go in and talk to Elizabeth. I needed hearing. And I couldn't find anybody with a staff that was more a hundred percent. And I didn't even know if I was a, Elizabeth said, yeah, Joe, we can send you a veteran. And she got me hearing a jingle, Elizabeth. And I'm so proud of you and your staff for doing that for me. And if you're happy where you're at, I think maybe if isn't, you could argue you're going to lose money. Maybe by moving it. But if you can keep her and that staff happy, they'll do a job if you move them. But there's still probably going to be. And I've heard, well, maybe there's not enough parking space. But their staff always parked to the west. And there's, I never did have a problem with a parking space. And then you say, oh, they got more parking being Mills County Health. And you do. But you've got elections there. And that takes up space at spatial events that you have there. And then veterans may not be able to get up there like they could where they're at now. And it just, I feel that even if you maybe lose a little bit, and I think the county's did some things that maybe didn't, wasn't like, even if you're not a veteran, you know, maybe your dad or mom or us. You come by there and see that flag up there and see that sign out there. And when you're going to Mills County Health, you're going to have a sign on the door. You're not going to have a sign out there. And it just, it, it makes me feel good when I go by there and look at that. And I just hope the board will kind of realize maybe everything that this community's been good to me and that, but not only the veterans, but anyway, that's about all I've done. I hope you take my consideration and think we are, this was, thank you. Yeah. Oh, I guess maybe I might plug the camera. But I know you don't have a lot of time here.
We've got plenty of time, buddy.
But, you know, I just noticed that things have changed here. You guys spend a lot more time here than you did 60 years ago. And everybody in this courthouse and everybody around this community has kind of helped me out in some way or another, sometimes move. I know the guy who's deceased now told me I was complaining about the county or something. And he said, Joe, you couldn't, they can't get you out of your care, this country. And he says, you know, it's kind of easy, critical. And sometimes you might think I have a hard time showing. Otherwise, you know, I think this community and the Mills County completely is better. Have a good job of keeping this community looking nice and this and that. And I hope if you do move, I don't take this place. I'll never look any better than when I had no life this morning. I don't want to act, I don't want to breathe. I don't know what you're going to do with it. It'll probably never look any better than it does today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse, you're up.
After that? Don't feel worthy.
You did feel.
Yeah. So Michelle, I'm kind of representing Michelle. She had the meeting. So we came in last.
Yep.
Um, so I was in here for the initial sign project, you know, but there, it's two. She, Michelle's worked really hard on this and she got a couple of bids. The work has been done. The rock.
Looks good.
Yeah, it has been done. We were just looking for a top until about three year ago to go to the city also. $600. So I believe Amber, you know. So Glenwood Shaking, for safety, most construction that they work, and then Shieldburg Construction. I did the rock. So we've got all contributors here. So we're asking that we contribute $600. Of course, as the aesthetic look of it, but for me too, just hearing, after hearing what having to cut on a bit of load themselves. I mean, you obviously have to have like a truck or something get up there first of all. And then there are all the mowers up there. So safety is that too. So I think this will minimize that.
The state right away too. So let's see if we can do that better. Do you have $600?
Yeah. In your packet, you'll see I have a printout of the veteran funds and where we have already slated to spend some. We still have about 5,200 left. And lost veteran funds.
Make motion to deny a $600 contribution to the Glenwood Sign.
I will second that just for discussion.
My main point when it comes to this is I think it's a good project. I'm very grateful for the chamber, Michelle Gresso, for working on that. This project was gifted $5,000 from the county last year. We only have 5,250 left in our local option sales tax. We have to make that last until the end of next June. I think there's projects that are spread out around all the county that hasn't received any lost money, that hasn't received any funding from the county that should be considered. And when this project was gifted $5,000 last year, I think that it's not our place to put more money, more county money into it.
You have a motion to second to deny the request for $600 for the Glenwood Sign contribution. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, Amber.
Sayers?
Aye.
Amber.
No. Motion failed. No, thank you, Jesse. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Schultz, you have a discussion.
I agree. Dick mentioned just a while ago that we had a meeting discussing winter more nets. From our perspective, that was a great meeting. We gave us like the opportunity to sit over, you may, um, volunteer chief. All of the supervisors from County Roads, Dick was there, Kevin was there, and then Dick Deputy England. And we had a very good discussion. It was a nice open discussion about our concerns, their concerns, but probably most important, we put together a method of operation that chain of how we're going to handle things this way. Good that we don't turn into a discombobulation like happened last December.
It's a double edged sword.
Yep, it is. It is by all means. But I think we have good plans put together. Yep, it is, it is by all means, um, but I think we have, uh, good plans put together, um, you know, we're all gonna work together and try and, in the event something like that occurs again this year. Uh, together, yeah, and work together and have, just have a fine plan so that we can, uh, minimize the downtime in the event that something. It was a very good discussion, I think, yeah, I think moving forward is gonna go very well, it was nice, uh, Jacob put that all together, so we could all sit around the same, Richard was there. Um, so it was a good discussion, and I thought it went very well, so, that's all I have, it's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a public hearing at eight forty-five, we're gonna bounce around here for a minute. Elizabeth?
Yes, sir.
Handle your claim quick here.
You bet, yes, thank you.
Consideration formal action, request for approval of VA assistance claim over five hundred dollars.
Yes, correct, we have, um, a family that, um, asked for help with their water bill, six hundred dollars. We are working with, uh, Ben at General Systems, that's his title, I'm sorry.
Ben?
Yeah.
Uh, community?
Community help, yeah, and he's helping us with some other things with them, so we can take a, you know, better bigger chunk out of what's on the water line, so.
Six hundred dollar water bill?
Yeah, it, their water bill runs almost a hundred and ninety, it's water, trash, and sewer. Runs almost a hundred and ninety a month, I could run that with utilities. Um, my commission did approve that on Friday, but since it's over, we're done here.
Yeah, 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 this is for a veteran, correct, this is not general relief?
No, 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 we're just working within the space, how we can best.
Well, that's good, that's good. Just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of a VA assistance claim over five hundred dollars.
I will second that motion. Do you have the exact dollar amount?
We're gonna contribute six.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay. Uh, motion and a second, any discussion on this, or any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you, guys. And I do want to just plug in again, I really appreciate that, it's been very helpful. From to, you know, contributing best, these are the reasons, but, but.
Good.
Okay, thanks.
Ewan, how quick can we handle you?
I think we can do it.
All right.
Pete, I'm next. I was in charge, here to request approval, she was thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars a year out of the opioid settlement fund. Instead of our public health budget, to a health fund, the community health worker program. And so I made a little pan out of the expectation. And so basically you could think of it as, we cover binge-based salary and quarterly payments, and so that amount is one of our quarterly payments. You have the total program cost, that being about eight point six percent of the total programs you look at, which Jenny had put in the general relief fund, with great benefits. Um, we also know that approximately eight percent of all Iowa's have a substance use disorder, so that's why it's kind of a proportionate, reasonable request, not asking for all of them to be covered. But it's just that eight percent of the total program. Um, I went on the Iowa Attorney General website, found all that allowable use of opioid settlement funds. And needs a lot of them, so I copied and pasted a couple sections out of there which are really aligned with. And one good example of something that they use is provide connections to care for people who have or are at risk of developing opioid use disorder and any co-occurring substance use or people. And she does that every day by providing those, the social detriment of health to prevent first.
And I did watch, I had a webinar weeks ago, and they, they're kind of loosening the springs a little bit. Um, and as long as it's a, a good use and you can kind of back it up, why it, it pertains to opioid use and, well, as long as they can, they breeze to it and there's way to back it up.
We could probably cover more of them, Joseph, I, but I will tell you what we're seeing, some of that, but what we're also seeing within that meth use is that it's placement. Uh, so I think that we're seeing more and more of that. Montgomery is a similar program, they're having her too long, and provide these maybe health services. He's also doing a few extra opioid specific programs, um, and all of his time is covered by those three funds, but it's very similar goals.
Do we have a total of what we have for opioid funds? I know that last round, they haven't, they, they said there was gonna be more coming, but I have not seen that, yeah.
I don't have the new number, but I can tell you what we have. Fund. About two seconds here, about three, give me one.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so to your contract, so requesting if we can approve for about here in that one, I think that'd be great, but.
I show that we have a balance of, of a little over two hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
And I did budget fifty thousand dollars worth of, um, expenses this year out of that, so it wouldn't need a budget memory thing, so I assumed we would spend some of it this year.
Sure.
Chris, make a motion to approve a portion of Mills County opioid settlement funds, thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars to support the community health worker.
For two years.
And then come back next year.
Good. I will second that motion. We have motion and a second to use thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars of opioid settlement funds. To support the community health worker program for one year, and just come back next year, Ewan. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good, thank you. All right, we'll hang that here for two or three minutes.
You guys want to do the action for the December second meeting, we're waiting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to change the December second, twenty twenty-five board supervisor's meeting to eighteen fifteen, due to a public hearing.
I will second that motion, we have a motion and a second to move the December second meeting to eight fifteen in the morning. That's a Tuesday, correct? Uh, any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries. Thank you.
I can give you, uh, I shared, but I am for your review, the annual financial report. Um, this will be published, I think, in the paper tomorrow and in the later, on Thursday. Um, just our annual report that we, um, do every year, there will also be a, um, gap, AFR, that our auditor actually prepares for us, and I'll have that hopefully next week or the week after.
We need it on the agenda next week.
I just, a review, but we don't have to have an approval or anything, it's just, uh, just standing and showing what we did last year versus what we budgeted for.
Good, thank you. This appears to be a big call.
I don't have a problem with it.
We'd be perfect. Okay. We will open the public hearing here at eight forty-five, Jack, you wanna make a motion for that?
I have motion to open the whitetail run development agreement, public hearing at eight forty-five.
Second that motion, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for the proposed development with Mark and Jennifer Hughes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are open.
I have not received any. Or already known.
I have not either.
Can you show us on the map where it is? Here.
Beacon, Paul Road, right, Mark? So we're, Beacon website is down this way. Trying to open it before I can read it today, so, it's north on, we call it Paul Road, two hundred thirtieth street. Miles north of town.
Okay.
Um, Bill Row, where he built a few houses, not where he lived, but where he built a few houses, right across from there, I think you know where that is.
Across the street on the west side of Paul Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This is a criminal sound, good. Nope, yeah. Any public comment?
I'd like to comment, I don't, I don't have to speak first, but anybody else wanna go? John Shirley. All right, John Shirley from Henderson, and I'll just stand here to the latter gross, you have the whole group here. Uh, usually takes a couple things to bring me down, uh, you know, that there's been several things on this that brought me, uh, that I wanted to speak to. I was, uh, looking at KMA a couple weeks ago, and the headline was urban renewal. Uh, project planned for Glenwood, or you guys approved something for urban renewal. And I thought, wow, you know, we're gonna tear down a building, or, you know, renew something, you know, city, because urban, you know, it's city to me. And renewal, you know, it's renewing stuff. And I think all of us think that urban renewal, that, you know, if you just look at urban renewal, I'm sure if the intent, or the, the purpose of this was different, they would have thought to call something that. But I don't think you guys could deny that different term, urban, renewal, you know, something. And then I saw the picture grass. Be on somewhere. And I looked, and I said that this developer apparently is so confident, that this was just gonna fly through and be okay, that they had constructed, um. Infrastructure there, in my breath, you have to build a road, or several hundred thousand dollars, man, so apparently, before this thing was even approved, or like, anybody really heard about it? Like, there's already roads being built, and that indicates to me that somebody's pretty confident, that they're gonna come to you and get this done, not get around. All right, but, then. I get some ad or something, that it, just, uh, west of me, I live over in the ghetto, by the way, uh, one mile from Montgomery County, one mile from Pot County. But we don't expect much, we don't get much. But I noticed that already somebody near Silver City has a lot that a developer is trying to sell. Five or six acres for a hundred and seventy grand. And I don't care really so much what you do over here, but when it starts creeping over my direction, you know, so. And then I look at my taxes and my insurance. I got a pretty modest house, like thirty-six by thirty, two-story, raised three kids there. Built it for eighty grand in nineteen eighty. It sounds says it about half a million bucks. And my taxes are about eight, with, with some property, some farm land, my taxes are about eight grand a year. And then my insurance on my home has gone up, as most years has, to about five grand this year, so before I even got out the gate, I got fifteen grand. To the county and to the insurance company, and I'm retired. Now, I'm a Shirley, so nobody has much sympathy for me, and I can handle it. I hear somebody coming in here, it's got a, I don't know how the hell you have a water bill of a hundred and ninety bucks a month, you know? And I was just going on, and I gotta tell you guys something, the name of the game now is affordability. In the last two months, affordability is a big deal, and I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be what determined your futures, really, really, and, and, okay? Now, living up there, I've been working with Macedonia, Iowa. On affordable housing. Lakens have got a bunch of money going out, they got a hundred and sixty-five million bucks. And their intent is to revitalize small towns. And, uh, what we're looking at up there, and even though I live in Mills County, I posted to Donnie, and they got a lot more going on, right? Like, they see the need for affordable housing, and when I'm talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about a hundred and fifty grand, I'm talking about. Getting two modulators on a slab. And getting it to where somebody can afford it. Now, I don't know what these houses are gonna cost, at this new, I think you have to come up with, uh, a development name, it's almost just coming up, that is coming up with a new band name. Eagle Hollow, Flying Eagle Pathway, I don't know. I thought these are gonna be four hundred to five hundred, it's a hundred thousand dollar homes. I don't see how you can build a house on this, okay? I Googled some stuff, to support a home of five hundred thousand bucks. Takes about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year of income. Okay, a hundred and sixty grand. That's after a hundred thousand dollars down there, which I don't know too many young people about that, okay? If it's a six hundred thousand dollar home, it's gonna take you a hundred and eighty grand a year of income to support that. Now Mills County. I don't get these exactly, but Mills County has a median family income of forty-nine thousand dollars a year. Forty-nine grand. The median household income, which I don't know how this is determined, is eighty-seven grand, in Henderson, it's thirty grand. If you're pricing homes three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand bucks, nobody in my neighborhood is gonna be buying it. And I don't know who in Mills County is the target, but I assume that you're gonna bring people out here that have got money, like has been done for the last thirty years. At the expense of affordable housing. Nobody young can buy a home. You bought the Art Fritter House, it was like a hundred and eighty grand, one hundred and thirty grand.
Thirty-five.
For a little teeny house in Henderson, now I'm not gonna bet you about home prices, nobody's got that. But I'm gonna complain. About the trend of this, you know, county, where people know the game, know how to play the game. Do the game, and we got people coming in in big homes, that you gotta swear here, they lost the, you know, you don't have the grocery store anymore. Um, these people are not young, I, if they're, if they gotta come up with that, they're usually older people in their career, forty, forty-five, their kids are gone, or they're, you know, they're not bringing the kids in. The statistics say that people, most in Mills County, drive to work. So why not just grab something at Walmart on the way back? Or why not just, you know, uh, they probably don't have a lot of kids, and if they do, they may be, just since they got that income, they might just take them to Saint Alp. Cause these schools ain't good enough, or maybe they'll take them to the St. Trina. I'm here to tell you that I don't care, but when it starts creeping into my area, when my home is selling for five hundred grand, because of what you're doing over here, and urban renewal. Is used, and I, so I suppose it's gone all over the place, right? But that don't make it right. And that doesn't mean that it's used for the intent that it is. Now, I just personally kind of had it. With this pop and cheering and the greed. Where is the affordable housing? Was part of this gig, there's supposed to be affordable housing? You tell me.
This is not an affordable housing submission, no.
Is there supposed to be something connected to that?
Yes, part of the TIF funds are set aside for LMI housing assistance, little moderate income housing.
Okay, in the past, we've had TIF financing, right? Where's the affordable housing from that? Where's the mothership? Is there a, a fund? Is there a building you can point to? Is there a bank account? That, and what is affordable housing? I submit to you. What's affordable housing? Well. I say before you just keep giving this stuff out to people. Get some balls and say timeout. No, this is your gig?
Yes.
I say, no. Until we get some answers on what is affordable housing, define it. Until we get something that matches Mills County incomes and values. Where are you going with this? Why? What kind of people do you want here? How much are these homes gonna be? You tell me?
Oh, they're not all built yet.
Well, how much are they gonna be?
They haven't built me yet.
You know how much you're gonna ask for these homes?
See, not.
Hundred grand? Two hundred grand? I mean, I'm just asking you. I'm, I'm not a lawyer. Do you need a lawyer here?
Let's keep it here, Chuck.
Hmm? Okay, let's, okay. You get what I'm saying here?
Absolutely.
Okay, why don't you just stand up and say for once? No. Not no forever. No, until we get, I said, where's this affordable housing from asked? Is there a fund somewhere?
You do have a fund, yes.
Where is it? How much is it?
I don't consider each, each project has its own LMI fund.
So where is it?
It's in our bank accounts.
Well, how much is it?
I don't know. Like I said, the beach.
Millions or thousands?
I couldn't tell you.
Are you gonna do something with that money? Does it just sit there? Um. You can't even define it.
What I would like to see is, uh, extend the waterline to Manialis, so those are, are more affordable and safer and cheaper.
You're a bits in the boat, man.
True.
I'm talking about young families that can afford a payment on a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand dollars. Okay, now maybe that's a fantasy. I think, I talked to some people and we're working with Lakin. Are you working with Lakin? Anybody here working with Lakin?
We have a lot of few projects, but not this one.
Affordable? Or, or mansion, cheap mansions?
He, he's giving money to the fair building.
Look, there's a hundred and sixty-five million bucks. For affordable housing. And all I see is doing is turning white. Arm with grassland and using some urban renewal scam. What does the word urban renewal mean to you? It's called urban renewal. Am I right? Jack, am I right?
My understanding of when the legislature created urban renewal is supposed to revitalize kind of more decrepit areas of cities or towns.
Council bluffs. If I didn't remember council bluffs, they built them all. It ain't much now, but they mowed down all that crap. And that's urban renewal. Urban renewal is not taking a, a cornfield. It, 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 it's like calling. It's an automobile, you know, it, it's not. It was never intended for that. And, you know, I don't know what it's gonna take. This affordability thing is big, man.
It is.
And, you know, I don't know who's gonna come out here. They're not from Mills County. I don't think there's any statistic here that would support. Anybody except the richest or the rich, you know, buying these homes. I don't know. But what are you gonna have? It's enough enough. You know? I say, what are we voting on today? To do this or not?
Development agreement.
It's a development.
They've already approved the urban renewal area. They're just approving a development agreement. That's the point.
What they do, what, what they do, John, is, is this is a.
I know what they do. You, can you tell me the intent of this was to take a piece of grassland and turn it into. Written a bunch of homes. Can you, can you sit there and honestly tell them that? No, you've urban renewal. People. Or, or put it. Table, okay? The audacity of building the frigging. Infrastructure and just coming here and assuming it'll be approved is, is just arrogant.
This, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This, this was asked for before they started construction. It was not finished because of.
So is everybody wink and a nod? Don't, don't worry, you know, it'll be okay?
No, and, and, and some of this will not qualify. What he's already built, some of it will not qualify for this.
All I'm telling you is a few miles from me now in Silver City, some clown has asked a hundred and seventy grand for five acres. My home is that I live in alone, and I have social security and some farm rent. Now cost me fifteen grand a year before I turn a wheel, or I turn on a light, or I fix a basement, or I do anything. Now, I'm asking you, Mr. New Supervisor, and you. To get. Can you vote to the people for a change? I got one other. I've heard. I got a quarry going in three miles from Easterman. Nobody really knew how it happened. John Paul owns the house across the way. He's told there's gonna be a quarry. I don't know what planning commission, what group, what. People said we could do that. I need a quarry. Hey, I'll go over and get a load. I've got lime and stuff. He didn't even know what, who's on, who, who approves this stuff? I've heard that the developers are on the frigging committee that makes the decisions. Is that true?
No, the, there is an employee for Sealed Burg that is on our, uh, uh, planning and zoning board, but this went through the Board of Adjustments.
Is anybody from like Hughes on these decision-making things?
His brother Al's on planning.
He's on planning and zoning, but he did not.
So your brother is on the planning and zoning commission and you have. Issues and projects coming before the planning and zoning.
No, no, it, it went for the Board of Adjustments, which he is not on.
Okay. I'm asking you. To like, call a timeout and let's get a handle on this stuff. Because you're doing nothing. The, the schools are, you know, it says here, population in Mills County going down. How can that be when we're building these fantastic new developments with Nancy Namens?
We lost a hundred and seventy homes in the flood too.
What happened to that money? When there are a bunch of money floating around, where's the affordable housing for that?
From where Hills was built here in Glenwood with.
I wanna know where this money is. Who's holding it? How much it is, what the intent is, what's an affordable home? And what, and I, I'd like to call a timeout on this stuff. This is just, you know, do you agree or not agree?
I, I disagree with you because the, the flood money was used for some affordable housing.
I'm talking about flood running, man.
In Arbor Hills.
I'm talking about this thing today.
That brought.
Today.
Low-income housing.
I'm out. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sure, I'll make a comment. Um. I'm not sure that any of this directly had anything to do with affordability, but I do support several of John's comments. The use of urban renewal designation seems rather strange and probably inappropriate. I, I, I do feel that there have been plenty of cases where. The developer. Is going to make. A nice profit. I'm not sure why they need public money in order to decide if you're going to develop a property. John's right, most of the houses are gonna be for people from Omaha or coming in. Normal wage earners in Glenwood are not buying six and seven hundred thousand dollar houses. Why are the taxpayers supporting? Um, developing a lot of this stuff for what I call private enterprise?
It is.
And that's the part I agree with.
It is not public money that is being used for this. Whether, what the urban renewal project does. You know. This notes, it takes a piece of ground that brings in, I'm gonna use just a round number for discussion purposes, two thousand dollars a year. It's pasture. Um, what that does is if they tip it, and if it's approved, those taxes are froze, so that, so the tax money still goes to the public. It's, the, the school's against theirs. And then as the incremental value raises, if they put a five hundred thousand dollar home in, that'll raise more taxes, more students for the schools. And they use that money to incremental growth to pay the development costs. After so many years, they come on the line and they're fully taxable. Those people are raising children here in the schools and hopefully they buy gas at. The local gas stations and eat at the local restaurants and turn the dollar here. But that's, it's a tool to promote growth.
So there's no actual money. Being spent.
Yeah, we don't.
The delay of.
No second dollars here will be given to them.
It's the. It's deferred.
It's deferred, correctly. While it's being deferred, we pay. While it's deferred, we.
And are deferred. Increased amount after. We'll build a home on the property, whatever increased amount is over that two grand, we'll go back into the TIF to day back for the road infrastructure.
Is that my infrastructure?
All the public.
Of the section infrastructure, you know, the road, for example. So we're paying for the road. Yes, we're paying for the road. The taxes that the people bought those.
And we do have ownership of the road and we've always had it, yeah.
Like, I need another road, you know? We just finished my road at Henderson. Thank God, you know, we got, I got something up there, but. And we do appreciate it. But, you know, this is just. You, you know, I know it ain't gonna make any difference. You guys got it all worked out, but I'm here to tell you that this affordability thing. Is gonna take down the Republicans. It's gonna take down everybody because it ain't happening anymore. My kids are convinced. They live on the East Coast. There's gonna be revolution. Because people, you've got young people who have no hope of ever owning anything. Because everybody's got it all. Clamped down. And, and I'm telling you, you can do what you want.
I have one more question about the whole TIF. In cases, in the past, we've made deals, not necessarily with developers for private residents, but. Businesses. The Bean Plant, for example, is one that always raises its ugly head. We defer these things, and then when it starts ramping up, they complain. We're gonna leave town. So, I mean, our, what? What could we say about these deferrals that we make? And then when it comes time to pay the piper. The people don't wanna pay the full amount and they fight it.
They're still paying the taxes. They're still paying. It doesn't, some of the abatement is one that does defer tax, like where they don't pay as much.
Hold it for an animal. Hold it for an animal.
It may be a different animal technically, but. It's the same philosophical argument about deferring what people owe. For example, you, you deferred part of the permit house, actually didn't defer, you just. Cut it in half, you know, we have fees, we have taxes that are on the books. And people come in here and ask for. Certain, well, I hate to use the word favors, but can you give me a fifty percent discount? Can you defer my taxes? And the answer is, every time we do that, the people that are here, that have been here, have to pick up the tab for that. And I think that's what. That's the part of what John says that I agree with, is every time we decide to give something to some entity.
Let's keep this directed towards the. The whitetail ride subdivision, which is.
Okay, then I'm, I've.
I'd be glad to sit down with you again sometimes.
Nancy?
Um, yes, you're, you're.
I'm the owner of the subdivision. Mark is, Mark is instruction. Approximately three years ago, we came in before the project started. And got permission to do the project, to get a TIF project approved. There's fourteen lots in the subdivision. Um, the main expense was the cost of the road, and we requested, um, TIF to help pay for. The idea of TIF is new taxes that are created from that subdivision help pay for the infrastructure. If we were told no at the time, that wouldn't be a TIF project. I wouldn't have done the project. So far, there's been four families, excuse me, four children that have moved in that addition that have bought new homes. Which will equate to approximately thirty-two thousand dollars of income. And we've moved one in schools at approximately eight thousand dollars per kid. Lost a lot of children. People moved away during the flood. It took a long time for houses to get rebuilt to help back up what happened with the flood or school system. We've lost a few hundred kids, that, but, which is maybe one point six million dollars of revenue that they got, so. But anyway, it isn't like we're coming asking for permission after the fact, three years ago, where you're talking about the project and looking at it. That answers part of the question.
Any other comments?
Uh, my name's Dwayne Olson. I live south of Glenwood here. Uh, this housing development here that, that Mark's hands on building, it's a positive for the community. Uh, people might not like it because you're building a home somewhere out in the field, but. Like it or not, it's called progress. You have to accept progress. The positive thing about all this is. You're gonna get more property tax dollars. Per acre. And that all goes here. In the coffer, which can be used for expenses. In the last five years, inflation's been almost twenty-five percent. Price of diesel fuel, everything's went up, and you're trying to figure that out on a budget. People don't want their property taxes raised. So this is a plus plus, I feel, for the community. So that's my sense.
Anybody else?
I guess I'd like to, um, just encourage the Board of Supervisors, uh, to take to heart, um, what was shared from an affordable housing perspective. I don't know how we do strategic planning as a community. I don't know how we look at, um, uh, requiring ourselves to have the self-discipline to. Uh, define some of these things and maybe rolling that into requirements when people come and, uh, want to develop property and have. A TIF defined, maybe that's not a good match, but it, it does sound like our community may be in need of homes that are more moderately priced. And, you know, what can we do to, to try to encourage developers to do that? If the Hughes don't see that as a, a good, um, economic, uh, advantage for their business. Then what do we do as, as a community? If not, then that is the answer. We, we don't have anybody who wants to develop. Any areas in our community to provide affordable housing. So then how do we control property costs? And control our corporate, our, uh, community spending that impacts our property taxes. It's not a simple answer. I, I totally, you know, agree with that. But, um, I also don't know what the rules and requirements are in approving TIF money to, um. Look to how we're going to use this money that's sitting in a, in a fund to be able to, uh, provide. Opportunities for people that need little to moderate, you know, housing opportunities. I know that, uh, we've been criticized as a community in our auditor, audits. As to how this money is set aside and how we're allocating that as part of our tax base. And, and I think that, you know, I think we have an opportunity here. We get to choose whether it's an opportunity that we can debate as a community and come up with a solution. Or just pretend like it's gonna go away.
How does this, how much affordable housing money comes out of this project?
Like thirty-six point four four percent of the increments of profit.
Now, can you quantify that for gummies? How much?
It's a third of whatever payments we get received in, depending on how much tax comes in, about a third of it.
You get.
Goes to LMI fund. Over the life of the TIF, which is either up to the development agreement amount typically is three ninety-six or. Can't remember how many years, just a bit. It's either, it's a year. Yeah, either it's a year mark or it hits the amount mark.
Okay, typically for this, it would be how much a, a year? For this project?
It really depends on if he fills the houses.
Yeah, it's, it's only.
And that's part of the development agreement. If, 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 if Mark, if, if the Hughes doesn't build houses there and increase the incremental value, he's on the hook for all of it.
Well, I'm hearing two different things. He, he says he hasn't built any homes yet. He's saying there are, it's there or already.
There are some. Built a few homes that will not be part of this.
Okay, so. And then, but we can't quantify in this hearing before you vote. How much in affordable housing this thing will.
You're exactly right.
Acquire.
You're exactly right. Yes, yes. It's all up to the developer and if they don't devote. You're exactly right. Yes, yes. It's all up to the developer and if they don't develop the houses and increase the.
So is the developer responsible for doing this, quote, affordable housing then?
This is not affordable housing. This is an urban renewal. So the, the, there is an affordable housing project that is going on in Melville. There's one that was just completed in, in, uh.
No, I said, where's this money go?
It goes to LMI Fund.
LMI Fund.
It has to be a five month. Yes.
Has anybody ever applied for it in this county?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we could have this big mothership of money somewhere, right?
Good.
And you guys don't know a thing about it.
I, that is one of the things I'm still trying to figure out is what is LMI? So that is one of my projects I've been taking on the last year is.
I'm here to tell you, if even, which I suspect you're gonna vote for this thing, which might, okay, invite squat. The biggest thing that's coming out of this, as far as I can see, is where's this dough? How much is this? And who's responsible for using it? And where's beef? Where's the affordable housing? Like that, to me, is almost like, man, I want to know those answers like tomorrow.
Well, affordable housing is different than urban renewal. So you're, you're.
Yeah, I get that.
Potato and a potato. So, so.
Do you realize how stupid this is, talking about this?
Yes, well.
Do you realize how dumb this is to even talk about urban renewal? This is just ridiculous.
It's a tool that's in place, that the state has put in that we can use in several communities using.
Urban renewal, tearing that joint down and making it end of a house or something, you know, that's.
Improving the incremental value to bring in more taxes and bring more people into your community. That is the purpose of the.
And I want to know where this money is and where's, where it's supposed to go.
We will get to that answer, John.
But, uh, we need out there.
We do, we do. And it's being built. It's, it's not just this subdivision.
Doesn't it seem strange that you guys aren't versed in this though? You've got this money out there, it could be, could be millions?
No, no.
Is it like hundreds of thou- I mean, I, it's, you know, they're like, is it more than a hundred?
And we have used some of it for projects to extend water lines and sewer and services to other people to create more growth. Where are you gonna put their, you can't build affordable housing, John, if you don't have a place to put it.
A hundred and fifty grand and a guy can, and a woman and two kids can, he can work. She can be a single mom working as an aide in a poor house.
We've got enough subject here. All right, let's, let's, let's stay on track here. Um, is there any other comments?
Motion to close the public hearing at nine seventeen.
In a second to close the public hearing at nine seventeen, is there any discussions? Here now, let's do a roll call.
Fairs?
Aye.
Eric?
Yes. Public hearing is closed.
May I stay for a moment?
No, not right now, Mark. Thank you though. Um, consideration formal action, resolution twenty-five thirty, including development agreement with Jennifer and Mark Hughes authorizing tax increment payments and placing certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. So next item on the agenda.
Standard development agreement, which has been for, um, our other projects as well.
I for one appreciate everybody that came and provided comments and, and questions to the, to, to the debate. I appreciate your comments, John. Appreciate your comments, Mark and, and everybody else. I have a few notes I guess I would like to make. Urban renewal, when it was created by the legislature, was supposed to use in urban areas to rev- revitalize areas that have gone decrepit or have then gone to disarray. Um, you find article after article, article online. If you look up TIF and Iowa Legislature where it explains that the Iowa Legislature and people in the Iowa Legislature representatives and senators are upset with the use that counties are using urban renewal because they do not believe that is the proper way to use urban renewal. It's not proper to put it on a piece of grass and then to build five hundred thousand dollar homes. And I just want to say to Dwayne's comments, you know, when we're talking about Mark built this road and then that's getting then turned over to the county. A mile of road costs a million dollars. A mile of road costs a million dollars. So this idea, in my opinion, that all these subdivisions are really good for the county, I highly disagree. We have had a lot of subdivisions in this community and if subdivisions were the answer to take care of our high property taxes, we would have solved the issue by now. But we haven't and they're not the answer. There's other ways and we have to find those other ways, but subdivisions are not the answer. Um, that being said, this was an agreement that was put into place, uh, multiple years ago that was planned on. Um, that is why Mark built the road and he expected it. But I think in the future, we have to revisit whether or not projects like this are actually a good use of urban renewal, a good use of TIF. I mean, uh, that was a big reason why I ran for the Board of Supervisors is because the world for a guy my age who's nineteen and twenty twenty-five is much different than a nineteen-year-old in nineteen seventy. It is a much different world when it comes to the wages, when it comes to the cost of living. Um, I'm lucky enough to be able to work enough and to be able to, I currently don't have a wife or kids to take care of. So I can afford a house, but for most people, they wouldn't be able to. And they certainly wouldn't be able to afford four hundred thousand dollar houses. So, um, I, I think it's something that we have to look into for the future, but that's just answering some of those comments that we heard there, but I think there's work that needs to be done. That being said, this was an agreement, um, that Mark planned on three years ago. Um, and he was given, I would assume, some verbal, uh, agreement from the Board of Supervisors at the time.
Submental.
So I, I would feel it wrong to not approve this current project. So I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight, approving development agreement with Jennifer and Mark Hughes. Authorizing tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
I will second that motion. And the motion is second to approve Resolution twenty-five thirty-eight. Is there any discussion, any more discussion? Here now, let's do a roll call.
Eric?
Yes.
Fairs?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion formal, possible formal action, update from the annex building walk-through of Veterans Affairs and Public Health. I was not involved in that walk-through, so. And if the, I don't know. Thank you, John.
Thank you. I can make some comments on that. We had a very productive walkthrough, um, yesterday. Really appreciated having a board health member, director of public health, uh, VA commission member, VA director there, uh, Richard was there, Amber was there, myself was there. It's a very good discussion. What I think the points that we have to remember with this is, is if you look at the old building versus the current building, and I understand having the building on the main drag, I understand, um, why, uh, veterans in our community would appreciate that. But as a county supervisor, we have almost fifteen thousand residents in our community. Thousand sixty-nine of those are veterans and we have to look after what's the best interest of all veterans. And quite frankly, the current building is not accessible to all veterans. It is not. There are nine parking spots. With those nine parking spots, if the three staff members are there, that only leaves just six. From the shortest parking spot to be able to get into the door of the building is eighty feet. Contrary to that, at the new location that they'll be located at, they have forty-three parking spots. And the shortest distance from the parking lot to the door is twenty feet. It is much different. It's down by sixty feet and it's zero entry. The current building has a two feet of incline. This building has zero feet of incline. It's zero entry. It is best for all veterans, whether they are young, old, and it takes into account their physical capabilities. I mean, this is what's best for all veterans. There's benefits after benefits. There's the benefit of there being a much larger and much safer basement. In the event of a tornado, if I remember right, the current building only has a drop basement.
I think it's a crawl space.
It has a crawl space. So if there's a tornado, we expect to lower down an eight-year-old veteran into that? No, we can't do that. There's an option to be able to get them down safely into an area where they will be safe from a natural disaster at the new location. Every so many months, it is the unfortunate circumstances that the VA staff has to call a sheriff's deputy car to be located outside of the current office due to the unfortunate reality that some people suffer from PTSD who serve our nation. That is an unfortunate reality. Now the VA staff will be located directly next to the sheriff's office, so that should help alleviate that issue. There are a lot of pros for this. It is not just about the cost. It's the fact of the matter that it makes the building accessible to everyone. And as I've said before, this isn't unheard of. Fremont County, VA and Fremont County Public Health share the same office space. It is not unheard of. And, you know, I've had some difficulty, it was brought to my attention yesterday in the meeting, that twelve hundred veterans are gonna be upset if we move the office. That's not exactly true. And I don't think it's right to mention to those veterans, um, that this office move is, is such a vital part of the services because what is important is the actual direct services to the residents. It is not the building itself. It is the direct services to the residents. Iowa code mandates that counties have one part-time person, that is twenty hours a week, point five FTEs. Mills County has two and a half, much higher than most counties in our region. Fremont County only has one point five FTE. So we put in a lot of money. We're proud of the service. We're proud of taking care of our veterans. And we want to make sure that we have the money there to provide the services. And by doing that, if it means that we have to downsize on buildings so we can continue providing the direct services to residents, I think that's well worth it. So I just want to clarify that because I think there's some confusion. I think there's, um, um, people who are upset about losing the building. I think there's some staff of VA that are upset about losing the building. But overall, it is in the best interest of all the veterans in Mills County. That's all I have to say on that.
You have questions or no? It's okay to say no. That's fine.
I'll talk to you afterwards, Lucy. You got anything, Lonnie?
No, I have nothing. Are we gonna act on this today or?
It'll be moved to the next week because I wanted, well, we had talked last night about having all three for supervisors for.
Makes sense to me. I'm good with that. Yeah, it's, 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 it's not just a, it's, it's not just a money move. Um, it's, it's, it is, it will have more parking. It will be easier access. It will have more safety. Um, the services, I would like to provide what we're providing in terms, not only what we're providing, but more. I think this will serve the veterans better at the location. It's just a learning curve of having two offices working together and they will. I, I'm quite confident in both, so. I agree. I do understand people seeing him when they come into town, but there's some pride there and long for that, but yeah, it's not just a money thing. We'll put this on the agenda for next week. Thank you. Yeah, no action taken on that. December second meeting, we took care of Katie Dodd's election deputy.
Just a second.
Thank you, Caitlin. You're up.
I am up.
You sign her name again?
Yes.
Consideration formal action regarding twenty twenty-five city school elections, signature canvas.
Um, so I just need your signature. Um, we got our, um, information back from Potawatomi County in East Mills. Um, so Potawatomi County had parts of Glenwood School District in it and Montgomery County had parts of the school district. And then I do need signatures on one correction for Iowa Western. It had the wrong name on it.
Okay.
And then we're gonna be signing some certificates.
Yes. Let's see here.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five city school election certificate.
Let's second that motion. Any discussion? Here now, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is the correction for Iowa Western.
Blue dog.
You.
There you go.
Right, this is Glenwood. Um, they had zero voters from Potawatomi County. And this is the, uh, their election summary. And then, Mr. Smills, Smills had two voter, uh, Montgomery County had two voter agreements.
Any council? Okay, sir. I'm starting for in your group.
This is the only certificate that's gonna be different. It's gonna say for the remaining term that started on January seventeenth, it's a two-thousand-dollar receipt.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any new business?
One comment I wanted to add, I spoke to Mokley last night, who ran for, uh, seat on the Fremont El Scott School Board. Through our discussions, I found out that Jennifer Wyatt won position on the school board. She's resident in Mills County. With that, uh, she technically is eligible to have seat on the conference boards, join the, uh, the school vote. I don't know who she is, I've spoken to her, but, um, hopefully we can gain contact with her.
Any other new business? Here now, I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'm just adjourned at nine thirty-three.
Second down motion, most gonna take it to adjourn at nine thirty-three. Any discussion? Hearing that all is in favor? Aye. There you go, we're adjourned. Thank you.